Okay. All right, I'd like to call the October meeting of Board of Managers from Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District, Two Porter. Looking at the Board Managers that are here, we have all of us in attendance except Bonnie is not here. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I have a couple of changes to make. First, I'd like to add underneath the consent agenda, the authorization for the administrator to execute the agreement with Met Council on the Upper Riley Creek Project, which is what was handed to you when you first came in the door with us. So something we've talked about for a little bit in the last few months, and we found the easiest way to do this is to actually just have an agreement. So that's what this is. Also, we would like to take off Item 7C, which is the purchase agreement terms, and we will probably see that come back next month. We have any other changes to the agenda?
Where's the, which one are you?
Agreement going?
This agreement.
Where are we going? Where are we putting the Metropolitan Council?
We are putting that underneath consent agenda, Item 5E. Item 5E.
Understand what the encroachment part is.
So would you like to move that on to new business?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll put that on the first item on the consent agenda. Remove from the consent agenda, which would be Item 6A, is where we'll move that. Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? Very none, I'm looking for a moment.
The agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the agenda as we've changed it, please say aye. Aye. None opposed. Next, we are to the matters of public interest. Anyone may speak to us. We ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Please identify yourself, where you live, with your address. Is there anyone who would like to speak to us? I see Mr. Cook. Mr. Cook, please proceed.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. It wasn't clear. My name's Larry Cook, live at 471 Big Horn Drive in Chanhassen. I have several comments tonight. First of all, I object to this meeting being held as not duly constituted, as there is not a quorum of duly appointed managers pursuant to Minnesota 103D, which requires fair representation of various hydrologic areas of the district. As a result, my position that any action purported to be taken at this meeting is null and void and of no effect, and all parties taking any action based upon the purported actions taken at this meeting do so at their own risk and liability. That said, assuming people don't agree with me, I have a question. There's a statement on the administration about having authorized work to be done regarding the Spring Road project, and I wanted to know who authorized and when it was authorized to do the work, including but not limited to work by, I believe, Mr. Smith's law firm, as well as, and the name escapes me, the other law firm. And you can either provide it now, or you can provide me subsequent to this.
We would be willing to provide that to you subsequently from the meeting.
That'd be fine, thank you. I think very importantly, I want to bring up, I think the, we desperately need rules in the district regarding wake boats. I think most of you are probably familiar with the report by the University of Minnesota regarding the tremendous damage that wake boats do to lake bottoms. I believe that you have sufficient jurisdiction under the recent revisions to 103D to take action to prevent the use of wake boats in a manner which would adversely affect lake bottoms and the shoreline. And I believe it's important that we start now so that these rules, regulations would be in effect by May 1st of 2026 for the boating season. Also, I noticed that it's in connection with this, Chanhassen, I believe, has its local surface water plan up for renewal the end of this year, and I think that would be a good opportunity to integrate restrictions on wake boats anywhere in Chanhassen along with the restrictions that I believe that the district should impose on the use of wake boats. And I note that prohibiting wake surfing does not prohibit the use of, other uses of these wake boats, so it wouldn't be denying people the use of their boats. Also, I noticed in the staff report that you're going to consider delisting Riley, but based upon what I heard about the water quality this year, is that still on the table to delist Lake Riley? And again, you can provide me with an answer afterwards, but maybe other people would like to know. Any response?
I believe we will respond to that again subsequently to the end of the meeting.
The other thing I have, I noticed on the staff report, it appears that St. Hubert's has not paid the amount due, so if that's true, they should be required to pay, I think, immediately. I think it's way past due. If they have paid, then maybe the staff report should be revised. And that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none. We are on to the reading and approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 3rd workshop and regular meeting of the board?
I move to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Does anybody have any revisions to the minutes?
Something. Remember where it was. Wait a minute. Page 2, line 51. Oh, it was very minor. Managers have agreed. I was just thinking the 10th should have been agreed, but don't worry about it.
Is that it? Okay, so all those who are in favor of approving the minutes of the September 3rd workshop and regular board meeting, please say aye. Aye. None opposed. And next, we're on to committee and member reports. I think we had a representative from the CAC here today.
We do indeed.
It looks like Hannah.
Hello.
Hi Hannah.
Hello. Nice to meet you guys, if I haven't met you yet. I'm a new member of the CAC since January. So my report for our last CAC meeting, we received an interesting presentation from Haley Sauer, I believe her name was, from the St. Croix Watershed Research Station about navigating salinity shifts in lakes. So we kind of learned about some of the salt-related impacts on lakes and the different results of that, and kind of where they're going with their research. And that was recorded and is available as well.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions of Hannah? Apparently not. I know you had sort of a short meeting. We appreciate the fact that you've come to us and spoken to us for a couple of minutes here. Thank you so much Hannah. Okay, next, we're on the September Administrator Report. Any questions and/or comments?
President Pedersen, managers apologize for the delay. I know you didn't have as much time to get through it. About a few fires, really nothing of importance there. I do want to get the Personnel Committee together before the end of the year here to kind of talk about personnel handbook and staffing. Other than that, I think the rest of it's fairly self-explanatory. I will, so the managers know, I will be out of the office tomorrow and Friday, and then I will be in Milwaukee, the 18th through the 20th.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
So Terry, on the Mitchell Lake thing, was there any kind of conclusion about whether that arm was?
Yeah, so what she is referring to is if you think of Mitchell Lake, it's like an upside-down horse, and there is a north arm that historically has gone dry, and then there is a public water wetland that sits on the east side of the lake. The, because it is a public water wetland, it is subject to different rules, and the people in the north arm, in looking at historical aerials, felt, well, we're dry whenever that's dry, so therefore we should be not considered part of the lake, and therefore not subject to those same management rules. We met with the DNR area hydrologists, and it was concluded through all of us that the only reason there's a hydrologic connection between that wetland and the lake is because at some point in the past, it was excavated to go through. So that's it. And we, you know, if you look back at the old blue blob maps, it's always been a public water wetland separate from the lake, and the north arm has always been part of the lake. If anything, you can see a causeway that would be built that would have acted to be a barrier to the north arm. So somebody tried to disconnect it, we don't know when that happened, but yeah, like it looks almost like a field approach road that maybe a farmer put at one time to get to an area or drive cattle through, so.
It's what it is, so to speak. It's not like an ephemeral wetland, don't worry. Okay.
No, it's a, it's a, it's semi-permanently inundated wetland.
Okay. I was just not sure when I was reading it, what the conclusion was.
Any other questions?
So under the communications and outreach, the Chanhassen thing, additional elements would be considered stewardship elements, would not be part of payback equation? Only those elements that are directly related to stormwater management and runoff control? Can you give me an example of that?
Yeah, so for instance, one of the things, so the boardwalk, to connect people into the lake and to be able to go out and use it, the city would not have to put something like that in in order to do stormwater management, but it does serve an education outreach purpose for us, would be that, those types of elements.
We got the permit, right? Thanks.
Yep. Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? No. Okay, next, the September Staff Report. Any questions? On to the September Engineers Report. Any questions of Scott? Yes, Scott, thank you. Next, the September Regulatory Report. And boy, this is the most issues I've seen in months, so apparently whoever has been out there looking at the permits and the actual installations of things has really caught us up, what we've had.
So we have, Madam President, Board members, we have two staff from BAR that are tag teaming the inspections, and I think they have been able to make hay. I think on this same note, I will also say that Andrew Hartman, who you might have seen walk through here earlier, today he assumed the role of regulatory coordinator for the district, so. So we're training him, and we spent the morning with him going over, or the afternoon going over, our database and how to work with it, and Engineer Solbyak, of course, will be available for him. He'll have the winter to ramp up and catch up to speed and then hit the ground running in spring. We will still have staff from BAR doing inspections for the remainder of this construction season.
Thank you. Any other questions from anybody?
We got the description. But we, was there a problem, or this is just listing what's out there, right?
So President Pedersen, Manager Craft, and what you're looking at now is, is this is all of the findings in, from the inspection. So previously, we've only put in violations or really egregious things, so what's in here now are anything that we would say, hey, you need to address this to come back into compliance. It isn't necessarily something that's an imminent threat to a water body or something else, it's just something that's out of compliance that we would like them to correct, corrective actions are called.
Okay. So there is out of compliance associated to you, that you send to some degree?
To some degree, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, next, legal report. Do we have a legal report? None. Thank you. And any managers have a report?
I said I've been busy talking to people about wire policy. It's been kind of fun.
Okay. Thank you. And we are next on to the consent agenda. This is Items A through D. We have moved Item E to new business, A. So I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda permits.
To approve.
Thank you.
To the vote?
And you have a second? Thank you. You? All right, so we have items on the consent agenda, which is permit 2025-020 Polk Residence, permit 2025-057 Veridian Credit Union to approve the C final payment number nine to Meyer Contracting for Rice Lake Water Quality Improvement. And the last is permit 2024-083 Conrad Residence. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items, please say aye. Aye. None opposed. Thank you. Next item, new business. The first item is the encroachment agreement that Terry gave us at the very beginning of our workshop.
President Pedersen, managers, so for the Upper Riley Creek Project, we had to secure a number of agreements, and we've talked to you about a number of them in the past with the City of Chanhassen, as well as several private organizations, and the Met Council interceptor line runs through there. We had originally gone to record this with Carver County, given they had criticisms with the way it was presented, and when we tried to resolve them, it became, it became extra, became extra. We'll just say that. And so we went back to the Met Council and asked them if it'd be okay to just enter into an agreement with them. They agreed to that. Council Welch worked with people from Met Council to put together this agreement that is in front of you, which is really the same thing that was to be recorded against the property. The City of Chanhassen is also a party to this as well, because it's, they are the underlying property owner. It is just to allow me to sign it and execute it, Met Council has already signed.
Questions? Okay, hearing none. I need to have a motion on this, correct? Because I need a motion to approve.
For, to approve.
Authorize the administrator to.
The encroachment agreement.
The agreement, right. With the Met Council.
And authorize the administrator to sign it.
Right. Thank you. I need a motion.
I move.
Thank you.
Approve.
Second. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of allowing the administrator to execute the agreement with Met Council on the Upper Riley Creek Project, please say aye. Aye. None opposed. Next, resolution for the Treasurer's Report and Payment of the Bills.
I move to approve the payment of the bills and the treasurer's report.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25-052 to accept the September Treasurer's Report and approve payment of the bills, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Next, we're looking at the resolution selecting BAR Engineering as the district engineer for 26 and 27, and authorizing the administrator with advice of council to execute the agreement.
I move to approve Resolution 25-053.
Thank you.
Bar Engineering Agreement.
And a second?
I second.
Thank you.
I have a discussion.
Alrighty.
So I don't have anything about training against the team bar, but what, we used to have a pool of people, and so some of our cities are doing more resiliency train, work in their areas, and I just wondered, couldn't we re, bring that back, the pool and have, because if some of those people are already doing the work, it just seems like it makes sense to have that available.
President Pedersen, managers, which you're referring to is in the past, and in fact, Manager DeValle asked me earlier today, isn't it odd that only BAR applied for this? And it's not only BAR applied for it, but what happened is the other engineering firms asked, is this for district engineer to be in the engineering pool? This was for a district engineer, so then they did not submit a proposal. We could certainly go back to having a pool of engineers. There is contracting issues that come up with that, but if that's what the managers would like, we could go out for a second. I would still say approve this resolution, have BAR be the district engineer. If you'd like to go out for a second request for proposals to have a pool of staff engineers, that's fine, we can do that. So that would be for the managers, though, to decide if they wanted to do that.
I think that's a good idea. Where was it posted?
Posted in the two newspapers that we have, on the League Minnesota Cities website, on our website. But I think that was it, yeah.
Okay. Just checking.
You have a question?
Yes. Yeah, no, I just wanted to say that I think it's a good idea to have, I know when I worked, we had like, we called them mini contracts, like they could spend up to $10,000 a year on specialty small.
Get him.
And, you know, they were just provided a little more flexibility, like if BAR was busy and we just had a small project, or maybe it's a project BAR isn't doing regularly, they could do it. I think it would be a good idea to have a pool of small contracts, and I don't see why that would be a big problem.
We've done it in the past.
Yeah.
I mean, we had that for a number of years.
We did. I'd rather not go into that discussion here and now as to why it wasn't always executed.
Do we need to make a motion or make a proposal, or how do we move forward to see if there's consensus here?
I mean, if there's unanimous consent or that you'd like me to do it, I think that's adequate.
It doesn't, I guess I don't know what it fulfills. I mean, we hire anybody we need for specialized projects whenever they come up, and so I guess I don't know how this would actually work.
President Pedersen, Manager DeValle, there are, there are instances where it is beneficial. For instance, one such area is, while BAR Engineering provides a number of services at an exceptional level, surveying isn't necessarily their strong suit, so we often have to go out to other firms to get surveying work done. There are times where capacity might be an issue. So there are, there are instances where we would, we would utilize other engineers.
So how is that, how is that different than if we just did it? I mean, we need, need one of those resources without this pool.
We would, President Pedersen, managers, we would need to go out for requests for proposals each time. We wanted to go to different.
Whereas the pool would allow us to do that, and it's our, and it's our discretion as to how that's utilized then, you as the administrator, or how does that work?
That would be up to how we set up the contracts with these, with these other firms. Mr. Smith may want to speak to that as to how that would, would work.
Men, present managers, it can work a variety of ways. Typically, if you have a group of engineers that have submitted in response to RFP that they would like to be in the pool, they typically will designate their specialty areas where they think the Watershed District might find their expertise valuable, and you can arrange for each of them to enter into a contract, and then it's a matter of issuing a task order, like your engineering firm proposes task orders for a certain project, the administrator would review that task order and present it to the board for your approval. So you have an agree, a service and agreement in place already, and then you just approve the task order for a specific project.
So would somebody in this pool, would they compete then with work that BAR is doing?
President Pedersen, there's not necessarily, no. If I, if I wanted to go to a specific engineering firm, because I knew they did a project similar to this, or I knew that they provided this service, I would go to them and ask them for a task order. We could go to multiple ones and ask for task orders and compare them, but really the point is to not have to do that, to be able to just enter into.
So is this, does this streamline the process of having, getting a resource? I mean, what is it actually accomplishing outside of the alternative?
It streamlines the process of utilizing a different engineering firm for various projects.
And that's in the statute that we have, what we're dealing with now regarding engineering services.
So this would be separate from professional services contract? This would be, this would be above and beyond, so this isn't necessarily the professional service, well, or is it?
It would be a professional services contract, but it wouldn't be the contract to be the district engineer.
So I guess I'd like to hear your response to that.
I'm going with him.
No, no. In terms of how you operate as the administrator.
So in the past.
Is that a benefit, or is that neutral, or is it a negative?
It's at worst neutral, and it could be beneficial. Surveying is a great example. That's where it comes up most often, where I need somebody to get out, do a boundary survey right away, things like that. So, so there are areas where it would, it would expedite and be beneficial. I think primarily, we're going to rely on BAR for most of our resources. There's just going to be times where we might.
Seems like it would make sense to have that.
I, I would agree too. Perhaps we need a motion and a second on that?
I move to authorize the administrator to get quotes or professional services for small contracts.
This is independent of the.
Independent of the district.
Of the. District, as, independent of the district engineer agreement, which is 25-053.
Madam President?
Yes.
What, maybe procedurally, it might be easiest if you first wrote on the motion that's on the table to.
That was my question.
And then take up the next.
Okay, let's go back to, let's vote on.
I have a motion in a second.
Yes. This is the vote on adopting Resolution 25-053, selecting BAR Engineering as the district engineer for 26 and 27, and authorizing the administrator with advice of council to execute, execute the agreement. All those in favor, please say aye. 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 None opposed. Now we're on to, we need the second motion, which I believe you have on the table. So now we need a second for that.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? No further discussion, yes?
Question, so this would be a new RFP then that would go out?
Correct.
Just like, it's just going out. It's not in the cycle and the time window we're working with right now, it's just totally independent.
Correct. President Pedersen, managers, that is correct. We, I would probably bring something back at the December meeting for consideration by the managers. I would probably target those engineering firms that contacted us directly when the first RFP went out, in addition to the advertisement through normal channels. We had three of them, I believe, that contacted us and asked about that, so.
So we're, and that would be posted in the newspaper, or how would?
Yeah, it's in the, the two newspapers that we advertise, League Minnesota Cities and on our website.
Okay. So we're on our website, would it be?
It's, we put a banner on the front page. It's right up top.
And would this have a time period then, also a window, like a one-year, two-year, or is it unlimited time period?
President Pedersen, managers, I will have Louis correct me if I'm wrong, but you can set, you can decide if you want to do one-year, two-year.
Would you like to amend your motion?
I would amend my motion to get a small contract proposal for up to one, for one calendar year. See how it goes. And do you agree?
I guess I wouldn't want it just to be small, because I'd like to have it opened enough.
Small, meaning not $100,000, it's going to be 10.
Not a million dollars.
Yeah.
It might be more than, I mean, if some of our cities are doing some work and there's something that, in some way that it could benefit working with us, it just seemed like it makes sense.
If that's a larger contract, we would go to BAR.
All right. So you're okay with amending your motion for a one-year period of time? Okay. Any other questions before we vote?
So one more, just to follow up on that.
Okay.
So is there a dollar limit on this? Or is it just, is that part of?
I think we need that at this point.
At the, at the moment, when a contract. At the, at the moment when a contract is solicited. Is there a dollar limit on this?
President Pedersen, Managers, what I would expect is that we would follow the governance manual where anything up to $10,000, I believe I can approve, authorize, anything beyond that, and come to the managers for their consideration.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
No other questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, none opposed. Uh, next, we are on to a resolution 25-054, selecting Smith Partners P L L P as our district legal counsel for 26 and 27, and authorizing the president with the advice of council to execute the agreement. Any questions, comments?
Move resolution, uh, number 25-054.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of resolution 25-054, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Next item is resolution 25-055, selecting ABDO as our district auditor for 26 and 27, authorizing the president with the advice of council to execute the agreement.
I move to accept resolution 25-055, selecting ABDU.
I have a second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting resolution 25-055, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Next, resolution 25-056, selecting Barry Dunn as district accountant for 26 and 27, authorizing the administrator with the advice of council to execute the agreement.
I move to accept resolution 25-056, Barry Dunn Accounting Services.
Thank you.
Second. I'd like to know more about him.
Thank you. Okay, questions?
How'd they go when you talked to him?
Uh, President Pedersen, Manager Craft, and, um, so I'll give you the, I'll give you a little more of a story. So we went out for RFQ. I, I specifically targeted engineer or accounting firms that were already doing business with other watershed districts. We received four RFPs, one of them being Barry Dunn, who was actually not doing watershed work in the state of Minnesota currently. I did a pre-submittal interview with all four firms that submitted, um, at which time I explained to them kind of the history of our treasury report and the accounting and, and how it's become, how we really need someone to come in and, and help us set up procedures, policies, and automatic bill paying, and to be able to work with the US Bank and the 4M Fund. And they all then responded with RFPs. So with the RFPs, um, I asked Manager DeValle to sit in, uh, me with the interviewer. And we interviewed all four of them, asked the same questions of them. There were two firms that, that stood out. Um, but one of the things that stood out most about Barry Dunn was they started, they, they had specific parameters for the onboarding. They had a specific communication plan that they would put in place with us. So communication and customer service really rose to the top with that of, of trying to understand what it is the managers want, what it is staff want. So I think all of them had their strengths and, and had things that they would be, I mean, they're all good accountants and that would be fine. But, but Barry Dunn rose, I think, to the top of that. The other thing that Barry Dunn had that, that the others didn't was some flexibility in the actual accounting software. A lot of them just went with QBO, QuickBooks Online. We're just going to go with that. They, they instead put it back onto, we'll work with you to find the appropriate software for you. They also did a very good job of addressing some of those, those inflection points where error is getting introduced into it. They also, um, good at talking about how they would, how any reconciliation, they would be able to verify that the fund itself had balance, not just here's a list of numbers that we've generated for you. So the, so they were able to check off the most box, it's really of everyone. That, there is some concern that I've, that, you know, I, I think of them not having watershed district work. They do work with a lot of government organizations. But I, I think there'll be a little bit of a learning curve, but they also were the ones that said, you know, we'll start right away working with your current accountant, getting things transferred over, making sure that when January 1st comes, we can hit the ground running with you, so.
Yeah, because that's going to be an issue. Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Let's vote on the resolution, which is 20, uh, 056, selecting Barry Dunn as the district accountant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Last item on the new business is adopting resolution 25-057, authorizing the administrator with the advice of council to enter into an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for the LaSard-Sams Outdoor Heritage Fund's grant.
President Pedersen, Managers, uh, before I go into any discussion about this, I do want to point out that I have contradicting information. So the resolution is actually for the president to sign it. I have administrator written in the, um, in the staff report. Mr. Smith is looking to verify that I am wrong. So I am wrong. So it is, the president is authorized to sign it. So we can do it either way, but it's, if the resolution is written for the president to sign it, it would be disseminated electronically. So we just need to email to you with an e-signature. Um, in order to move forward with the LaSard-Sams grant, we need to enter into agreement with the Department of Natural Resources, who administers the grant dollars. There are a number of different, um, boxes to check to go through this grant process. This is the, the first one. Well, the second one, we did get the appraisal updated. Um, and so with this, then we, they will, when this contract is executed, we can start the process. We can give them the appraisal, they can start to look at, to release the funding. So that's what this is for. Uh, Mr. Smith has been involved in this throughout, perhaps more so than I have actually to this point. I don't know if you have anything you would like to add for the manager's consideration, but it's fairly straightforward.
Have we already sent this? They're aware of this?
I'm sorry?
This is on their radar, right?
Yes. But, yeah. So I am working with, um, Jason Titeman, Titeman, uh, at the DNR. Um, he's the one that sent, well, this was sent on his behalf to us. He was out of the office at the time, but he is the person from the DNR that I'm working with.
That's encouraging.
So in the actual, uh, resolution, um, uh, past manager Ziegler is listed as one of the board managers. He might want to change that.
We'll fix that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Believe Mr. Monahan's fixing it right now as we speak.
Super. All right. All those in favor of adopting resolution 25-057, please say aye.
Aye. I would be with the change, right?
Yes, with the change. Super. All right, we're on to discussion items. Uh, at this point, we may go into closed session. Do we need to go into closed session? Uh, Mr. Smith?
Madam President, I guess it's my judgment that we're in a posture where there's not a need for closed session discussion. If any of the managers feel they'd like to, uh, ask questions, we certainly can. Um, Minnesota Supreme Court recently denied review in the, uh, second matter, the appointments case. So that issue is dead and done. Uh, and so there are other claims in that lawsuit that are now before the district court. We can just keep you apprised. There's no further developments now.
It's going to be at least another month or two or three. But we don't know.
We don't.
I don't see any other questions or any other need there. Uh, I believe that brings us to the end of our discussion items. You'll note the two upcoming board top topics, which is the plan update and also bonding, should be coming fairly soon. Um, I'm assuming everybody that's going to the Minnesota Waters Resources Conference has already registered and done their thing.
Well, it's on the agenda to do, so yeah.
Okay, Ben. Uh, and then everyone, we'll see you at the Evening with the Watershed on October 23rd, 5:30. And then, um, on your calendars, the annual conference, uh, from the, um, 3rd to the 5th of December. So I believe that's it for our events. And I, of course, am looking for a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Thank you so much, everyone. See you on the 23rd.
Yes, sir.
I was wanting to get together with you.